It is seven o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call our regular meeting for January 12th, 2023 to order and turn things over to Commissioner Johnson to lead this in the case.
Let's pray. Holy Father, please be with us as we go about the town's business. Be with our country as we go through ultimate changes on a daily basis. Be with our, the folks who need your guiding hand, either them being sick or lost. Be with our, the folks who protect us on a daily basis and just be with our families as we go to and fro. And these things we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. All right, next up is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, got a person, a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up, we've got the swearing in of Youngsville Police Officers. Chief, I'll kind of turn it over to you to give a formal introduction and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, the members of the board. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce you the two newest members of our team. Mr. Mayor, if you could come up, please, sir. I'd like to introduce to you Officer David Serenkowski and Officer Gabriel Fenara. Officer Serenkowski served eight years with the US military. Six years of that was with the US Navy where he attained the rank of Petty Officer, Second Class E5. After serving with the Navy, Officer Serenkowski served two years with the West Virginia National Guard. He also worked nearly two years as a detention officer for Durham County Sheriff's Office. Officer Fenara has over four years of law enforcement experience, serving first with the Lake Royale Company Police and next with the Franklin County Sheriff's Office before joining us here in Youngsville. Mr. Mayor, if you do the honors, please, Sir.
Raise your right hand, please.
I, state your name.
I am David Ferenc.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will be alert and vigilant
That I will be alert and vigilant.
to enforce the criminal laws
To enforce the criminal laws.
of this state
Of this state.
that I will not be influenced
That I will not be influenced.
in any matter
In any matter.
on account of personal bias or prejudice
On account of a personal bias or prejudice.
that I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain.
the Constitution and laws of the United States
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith.
and that I will faithfully and impartially
Faithfully and impartially.
discharge and execute
Discharge and execute.
the duties in my office
The duties in my office.
as a law enforcement officer
As a law enforcement officer.
according to the best of my skill
According to the best of my skill.
abilities and judgment
Abilities and judgment.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you, sir.
And I believe we've got a couple of members of the audience that would like to come up and ban our new officers. I feel like we can turn them on. And can't remember so. I don't think you're along where you need to be. We're fighting often.
All right, picture time. Any family members in here that want to jump in? If they have a picture or a sheet.
No chance, go.
Can chief and I get in?
Yeah.
I'm trying to break the bike chain.
Too damn skinny. It's like looking through. There we go. I'm glad.
All right, and then next up, we have item four, presentation of achievement awards for Officer Barrington Simpson and Gabriel Fenara.
Oh, because I don't.
As the mayor said, I also have the pleasure tonight to recognize two of our officers for outstanding performance and merit to a service. I believe you would be just as proud as I was and touched even when you hear the story of these two officers and the selfless service that they did for our town. And if I could get Corporal Robinson to come up and do the honors, please.
Good evening. So on December 9th, 2022, Officer Simpson and Officer Fenara responded to a welfare check in town and they found a town in Youngsville resident in her vehicle and she was in need of assistance. The officers helped the citizen back into her home where they found her in need of household items and groceries. The officers determined she intended to go to the hair salon and the grocery store but was unable to operate her vehicle. In speaking with her, the officers realized that she had been in her vehicle for several hours before their arrival. The officers quickly developed a plan to assist the citizen and see that she received the necessary care. The officers made sure she was in a safe neighborhood and they purchased groceries for her using their own funds. In addition, after they purchased the groceries, they went back and they went through her kitchen and put the groceries away and even threw out rotted items and stuff. On December 14th, 2022, Officer Simpson and Officer Fenara arranged for the same citizen to go to a local hair salon with an all expense payment. Officer Simpson and Officer Fenara's willingness to go above and beyond their duties is a testament to their character and embodiment of the epic values of the Youngsville Police Department. Officer Simpson and Officer Fenara's selfless service and devotion to duty are in keeping with the highest traditions of law enforcement service. Their compassion for the welfare and dignity of our citizens reflects great credit upon themselves, the town of Youngsville, and the state of North Carolina.
We shake and take? Shake?
Shake.
Thank you, sir. Very well done. Congratulations, guys.
Always great to hear and be able to support and acknowledge the people who keep us safe. So thanks again, gentlemen. Moving along into item F, presentation of proclamation, Children's Dental Health Month, Wake Preparatory Academy. Proclamation reads as such, Children's Dental Health Month, whereas the future is, to a large measure, dependent on the good health of our families. Whereas good health can be achieved in part through good dental habits learned early and reinforced throughout life, be resolved in I, Mayor Fonzie A. Flowers of Youngsville, North Carolina, thereby proclaiming the month of February as Children's Dental Health Month in order to set all citizens and community organizations join in this observance and witness hereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of North Carolina to be appraised this 12th day of January 2023. And Emily, I mean, Madam Clerk, I appreciate you taking care of this so I can deliver this tomorrow. And we'll move along into item six, which is the public hearings. And the public hearings portion is actually going to be continued to February 9th, 2023. The action at hand was a request to rezone property on Fleming Road across from Fleming Farm Road. The reason why we're going to continue this is the planning planning board did not have a chance to meet. They didn't have a quorum at the last meeting, so they didn't have any chances to kind of go through and review and make a decision to give us a recommendation. So having said that, we'll move along into citizens' comments. Madam Clerk, did anyone register online to speak?
There's one person that has registered and you should have that.
Oh, here, okay. All right, Patrick Kelly, Youngsville Animal Hospital.
Is that the gentleman that just stepped out?
Probably not. Anybody online? Don't reckon you got confused when I said there was no public hearings. I wonder if they read Kerry Johnson's article today thinking that we were going to give him the hook. If that was him, I mean, I want to give him his
Who was his name?
Patrick Kelly.
Thank you.
I know sometimes it is confusing for a first time.
Public hearing versus citizen.
Right, yeah. This is also, uh, no, it's the number one fire district.
That I received specifically regarding the fire district.
Yeah.
So I did enter him in online based on the email to speak.
Okay, all right.
I've never met him, so I could do anything I would like, but based on the emails, he didn't want to speak.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we'll Okay, and that's fair too. We'll see. We'll give chief another moment and see that we can come back to that if need be. We have a winner? Yep, looks like it. That was him, okay.
All right, there we go.
Mr. Kelly, sorry about the confusion. I know oftentimes when we talk about public hearings and citizens' comments, I think a lot of times it can sometimes be confusing. So we're at the citizens' comment section now. You're the only person who registered to speak, so the floor is yours.
It's all me. Okay. Well, I apologize for walking out. I really did. Thank you. You should continue. I was going to go to some other meeting, I guess, at a different time. So I apologize for that. I just wanted to, I guess, talk to you specifically about the zoning issue, the zoning change. We, I currently represent one of the, I guess, downtown businesses, the vet office, National Vet Office Hospital, I guess it is. They're looking to expand their operations, looking to add about 800 square feet, I guess, to their property. That will expand their surgery department as well as some administrative offices that they dearly need. Currently, the zoning is in the fire district, number one, which would require, or does require, by understanding, very, very expensive non-combustible materials to be placed, I guess, in the construction itself, which is, like I said, are very, very expensive. We are, you know, those expenses obviously will get passed down to the community, unfortunately, and we don't feel that they're necessary.
Okay.
I'll leave it there unless you guys have any questions for me.
No, I think we're good. We will certainly discuss it here and a few more action items. So if you wanted to stick around and be
Absolutely.
hear how things roll out, then be good to go, unless any of the commissioners did have a question.
Point of clarification, is this the one in downtown or the one off of
Yes, right downtown.
Bailey?
Yeah, okay, yeah, all right.
Yeah, Bailey, yes.
All right.
Well, thank you guys for the opportunity and thanks for tracking me down.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. All right, item eight is the consent agenda. The action requested here is to approve consent agenda as submitted.
Very much still approved.
Second.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. There is no old business to discuss. We'll move along into number 10, new business. Item A is a request to rezone property on Fleming Road across from Fleming Farm Road. The action requested here is to continue that to the February 9th, 2023 board meeting. Do I hear motion to continue to the February 9th, 2023 board meeting?
Motion to continue.
Second.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, continue to February 9th, 2023. Item B is amend Youngsville Code of Ordinance, Section 2.301, Fire Limits, and Section 2.301.1, Amendment to Fire District. Action requested here is to adopt the changes to the code of ordinances, adopting a reduced number one fire district. Mr. Page, was there anything that you wanted to add to that prior to, I saw some of the notes that you had written in the packet, but didn't know if there was anything in particular that you wanted to address before we call for a vote?
Just that it was originally designed to require masonry and construction, and over time it was viewed that they wanted to make it safer and safer, for good reason, particularly in high rises. The number one fire district has the same requirements in downtown Raleigh as it does for downtown Youngsville. And as such, what it was doing was it was restricting development in downtown Youngsville and actually because of that incentivizing development on US-1 and other places where we didn't want it. So by virtue of reducing the number one fire district to our own parking lot that we own over behind the Old Town Hall, that has the elevated building characteristics and the rest of downtown has to still meet all the building code, has to still meet all the fire safety, all the fire code stuff. It just doesn't have to meet the elevated fire code that you would expect for a 15 or a 50-story building.
Okay, fair enough. Any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Again, the action requested here is to adopt changes to the code of ordinances, adopting a reduced number one fire district. Do I hear motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that motion carries. Item C, presentation of annexation petition 2022-4, Holden Village.
So this is the property on Holden Road that reaches from Holden Road all the way back towards Jeffrey Way. We saw them probably six to eight months ago for a development agreement, and they are now ready to move forward. Both town administrator and town attorney helped investigate the signatures while I was out. All signatures and paperwork is in order.
Okay, and then moving along into item D, resolution directing clerk to investigate a petition received under North Carolina General Statute 168-31, Holden Village, 2022-4. Action requested here is to adopt the resolution.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Item E, presentation of certificate of sufficiency for annexation, Holden Village, 2022-4.
Like I said, I was able to have enough time to investigate with the help of the attorney and the town administrator. All signatures are in order, ownership and meets and bounds description.
Okay, so move along into item F, resolution fixing date of public hearing on question of annexation pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-31, Holden Village, 2022-4. The action requested here is to adopt resolution fixing date of public hearing for February 9th, 2023.
Move to adopt resolution.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Item G, presentation of annexation petition 2022-5, Rolling Meadows.
This is the development we recently saw. It's the one that connects from Hicks Road all the way back to Fleming Road. Thank you again to the attorney and the town administrator for their help while I was out. All signatures and paperwork are in.
Okay, so move along into item H, resolution directing clerk to investigate a petition received under North Carolina General Statute 168-31, Rolling Meadows, 2022-5. The action requested here is to adopt the resolution.
Move to adopt resolution, second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, and item I, presentation of certificate of sufficiency for annexation, Rolling Meadows, 2022-5.
The signatures of the owners are all appropriate and the meets and bounds description matches the annexation.
All right, so moving along into item J is resolution fixing date of public hearing on question of annexation pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-31, Rolling Meadows, 2022-5. Action requested here is to adopt resolution fixing date of public hearing for February 9th, 2023.
Move to adopt resolution.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Is there any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? That also carries unanimously. Reports on other business? I don't really have anything. I hope everyone had a great Christmas and a great New Year. I'm excited about 2023 and what the New Year brings. You know, 23, there was a famous athlete that wore that number. A lot of people call him the GOAT. A lot of people call him the GOAT, so I'll say 2023 for town of Youngsville is going to be the year of the GOAT. So that's all I really had. I hope everyone is, I'm kind of getting over a little bit of a head cold, so I hope everyone is staying healthy and well and all that stuff. I'm past being, getting anybody sick, so don't fret. But just hope everyone has a great year and I'm excited about what the, what the New Year is going to bring us. Commissioner Redd?
No, December was great. The tree lighting was lovely. Thank you for the great T-shirt. Fantastic. New Year's was lovely and I'm looking forward to 2023 planning for the Sescua Centennial. That's fun stuff. Yeah, no, that's all I have.
All right, Commissioner Percy?
I don't have anything for today.
All right, Commissioner Brain?
Carl Warkowski reached out to me today to let me know that the date for the trash pickup this year has been set for April 1st. That's a Saturday. I'm sure we'll see plenty more notices go out on social media. He did say that they were going to identify some of the more, I wouldn't say, the more littered roads. I don't know if that's the right way to say it, but try and get those ahead of the day and do those on separate events so we're not spending all day trying to get those.
What day was that?
April 1st. And I want to say they usually start around nine or 10, but I would wait until the official announcement. I plan to be out there as much as I can. We usually have soccer during that time, so I'm just putting it on the calendar. Yeah, we'll be around somewhere. And that's all I had.
Okay, sounds good. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I just got one thing. I was approached twice today, being one of them, about dump trucks, loaded dump trucks on the side streets. Does that fall into purveyance as far as being big trucks? Because they're coming up down at Winston Street as well. They're cutting, they're cutting Railroad Street, going up to Franklin to beat the, try to get to the three-way, to the four-way stop.
Yes, sir. The prohibition's in wait, man, it's still alive.
Okay, so just out in my yard talking to this, talking to the citizen today, two full dump trucks came by. One was going about 45 because I looked at the sign.
Yes, sir.
So we've got to get, we've got to get that under control. I mean, and I'm not saying it just because I live on that street.
There are other people that live on that street as well.
And that road is not wide enough to handle a dump truck and a car coming by at the same time.
I completely understand. We've got some ongoing conversations I have with the captains of the police department. As a matter of fact, Captain Lowsley reached out to the Department of Transportation today, Enforcement Division, and we should have, I'm hoping in the coming week, either someone with Department of Motor Vehicles or with North Carolina Highway Patrol and their weight scales so they can actually do some enforcement with a teeth, as they put it, which would, and our officers are working in conjunction.
Yeah, I think one of the citizens actually stopped one of the trucks and the guy basically told her, you know, "Police can't do anything to me." So, and I know she probably came, I know she probably came up here.
That would be a very interesting perspective if we catch them.
Good, because it's basically on a daily basis and it's not got anything to do with our, our folks that are on Fleming. Those guys are going, and it's all different types. But the two that came by when I happened to be outside today at like 3:30, 4 o'clock were full to the brim with limbs and trees and everything else. And people were actually having to pull off and stop so that guy, so those guys could go by.
Yes, sir. I'm hoping with minimal effort and the presence of our guys and especially with the Department of Transportation out there giving us a hand with that, the word in the commercial industry gets around pretty frequently with those guys with a commercial driver's license, so hopefully we can get out there.
I think a lot of them would go away with just a good presence and that's on both sides of the fence, not for only the folks who are violating, but for the people who live on the streets to see that there are actually some action in place. And, you know, I live there. I put up and do, you know, I'm a guy, so it really doesn't bother me, but, you know, there are folks on that street that have children, there are older folks on that street, people trying to turn, I mean, in the mornings, you can't even turn out to go either direction. I can't turn out my driveway going right back toward Cross Street because it's not, it's not wide enough for me to turn when a car's coming. So I can understand their plight.
Yes, sir.
And you got folks, you got folks sitting out there every day watching that stuff. So I'm just telling you that.
Well, thank you for reaching out to the DOT and other people to try to come in and really make a team of it. That's, that's good.
Because when they turn on that street, they got nowhere else to go but right down it. So, I mean, they're not going to be able to back up and get away from DOT guy, right? So they got to go right by it.
Yeah, we'll get them to a place where they can roll the scales out.
Good, thank you. That's it, Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. And Commissioner Wiggins?
I don't have anything.
Okay, all right. Anything from our esteemed town attorney?
At the request of Captain Lemmons, we put together an information security and data breach response policy for the town. We had also opted to increase cybersecurity coverage and assistance after a cyber attack. So we're working on increasing the town's ability to respond to any kind of attack like that. Actually, two days ago, about 13 registered deeds offices were hit with cyber attacks because armed. So this is sort of an ongoing risk and thankfully, YPD has been working to make sure that we are ready to respond if something like that were to happen.
Outstanding. All right, anything else?
That's all, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any additional reports or the business from staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just got a couple of them. Deputy Clerk Bozak
Deputy Clerk Boz Adams has brought to my attention that the contract for our website has, we've now reached the stage where they're going to give us a free website design, because we've been a client of theirs for so long. They'll just be really updating some of the security and the background, whatever, we're not going to do a major rewrite of it, it's not a big, total new website, but it will change some of the handshakes and stuff that your devices do with the website to try and upgrade the security there. But in particular, she recommended that this might be a good time for us to roll out the youngsvillenc.gov portion of our website, rather than the townofyoungsville.org, if that's something that the commission is interested in, and then if we wanted to update with photos of the commissioners and the mayor, Fonzie, yours is on there, excuse me, Mayor Flowers, yours is on there, a more updated picture might, might be beneficial there, and then we could have one for each of the commissioners as well.
One more picture? There definitely isn't one with more hair. The only thing that it might be is a lot less gray in the facial hair. I was waiting to see if Robbie's or Emily's would try to pull that up, so, no, I mean, I like the idea, I, you know, a no-haired day is a no-haired day. It's what God gave me, man, good thing I got a good sense of humor, so, no, I mean, I like the idea of keeping it kind of short and clean, right? So, youngsvillenc.gov is a heck of a lot easier to type in than townofyoungsville, I mean, it's just got a better flow to it, so what would the timeframe be to make that transition happen?
You can go to it today and it works.
Okay.
In terms of how long it will take for the website to be updated fully, I'll defer to Deputy Clerk.
We're currently in redesign mode, I have a meeting next week with them in reference to some preferences that I had a discussion with them with, in reference to the colors and our logo and such.
Okay.
We're looking at four to five months.
Okay.
Before we go live.
Okay. All right, yeah, I think, I mean, I think that timeframe works, works well, gives the chance to transition kind of off of the platform where we are, and upfit into a new platform, so, okay. Any additional updates from staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we are all very proud of our Christmas parade, right? So, the tree lighting ceremony, I thought, was as close to flawless as possible this year, and when the tree plugged in, I mean, it was, it was bright, it looked great, it was amazing. On that note, we did not set aside funds in the budget for additional Christmas decorations along Main Street, but it was recommended by Clerk Hurd that it might be a great idea for us to unveil some new Christmas decorations on our new Main Street as we get into the holiday season next year. And to that end, there is a significant discount for purchasing Christmas decorations in January, nobody wants to keep them for the next year, so it was recommended that we perhaps use some of our contingency money to then align that with a future budget amendment to purchase somewhere between $7,000 and $10,000 worth of Christmas lights to brighten up Main Street for that time of year.
Okay.
If that was the consensus of the board, I'd move forward with that, and we'd have whatever budget amendment number three, which will probably come before you guys in June or July.
I'm on board with it, I think I'd already expressed the expansion.
Why don't you give us like three ornaments?
We replace the 10 snowflakes that we have, we replace with 10 other lighted ornaments. The banners are still in good condition, but with the 33% off sale, it's a huge discount in January, so we can get.
Are we buying it for our normal vendor, we're buying it for our normal vendor, correct?
Yes, for, we still use Moscow.
Moscow.
So, we're just placing.
We're at Youngsville, so they're going to make sure it look good.
Yeah, that's true, so we're just replacing what.
Just the snowflakes.
Right.
Banners, we might replace at a later point, but they're getting us out much.
But we're not like adding new decorations, we're just replacing what we have, right.
So, I would get rid of the snowflakes, I would like to get a different design.
Slide it up.
Because you can get.
Yeah, Christmas tree light all the way through.
I was thinking of like this, I know, there's so many.
I was thinking, this is so pretty.
It's 50 degrees.
I was looking at some of the, there's still the outline, the way that the snowflakes
are, there would still be outlines of trees and things like, Christmas types of ones like that, but they would have color, they would be green and red for the Christmas trees and things like that, for almost the same price as the snowflakes.
There's definitely a design that we need to stay away from, and I can talk to you about that after the meeting, I don't think we need to bring it up in here, but I've seen in, I've seen in other towns, and it is not very reflective of the Christmas cheer.
Okay.
I'll just try to put it as mildly as possible, so, I like the idea, I mean, if we're going to replace the snowflakes there, maybe we can find other avenues for those snowflakes, maybe to expand out, maybe up 1A or down 1A or something.
Other places we could put them.
Yeah, okay, I mean, again, I'm good with it, Commissioner Johnson seems to be good with it, I don't know that I want to spend the kind of money that he's referring to, but.
Still have a reindeer too, man, come on.
If y'all gave me a huge budget, I could light this town up. You know, there are amazing things.
What's the definition of huge budget?
So, if you stick me with 10 grand, I can make the town look great. If you give me the 50 or whatever, I can make the town a new park, a Mitchell Park, and we can go in other directions, but also want to get new banners on Main Street fairly after the Main Street project in the next fiscal year as well, so.
I say we go baby steps with the 50,000, I think, I think I'm okay with 10,000 to. Update and upgrade, again, if we're going to do it, let's do it right, we got the longest running Christmas parade in the state for a reason, something that we should all be proud of, and I mean.
But if we spend 20,000, we get a 50% discount on everything, right? Then how it works.
No, you know.
That actually would have been a good, that would have been a good bargaining chip right there. Are there any commissioners that have any angst with spending that money to upfit and upgrade our decorations?
No.
I just heard Larry say, like, we weren't going, we weren't going big enough.
Is that what he said?
Well, I mean, I would be.
It's been a little sparse on Main Street, and I was wondering if a few more would make it look a little better.
Sure, yeah.
So, maybe not $50,000.
I'll see what I can do in the seven to 10, and if I have extra left over, we can grab a few more, but I can make it work in a decent budget.
It sounds like you have your consensus.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that what you heard too?
Yes, sir.
All right, is that what you heard too, Madam Clerk? Okay.
I'll show it to you before I buy them.
All right, again, there's only one that we just definitely need to, and as soon as I show you pictures of it, you'll understand why, so, okay, moving along, closed session, we do need to go into closed session tonight, so item A is North Carolina General Statute 143 dash 318 dot 11, six for personnel, got a little performance evaluation that we want to get through, and I'll entertain a motion to enter into closed session, I forgot, and if you don't mind.
Motion to go into closed session.
We'll come back and get it. All right, so we got a first.
Second.
And a second, any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are now in closed session as of 7:38.
That's kind of fun.
It's 8:25, we're back from closed session, we didn't take action through closed session, so we can come out here and take action out here, and we'll hear a motion on the table.
I'll make a motion to amend the contract of the town administrator to adjust the salary.
All right, we got a first, second, and a second, okay. First and a second, any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, that is unanimous. Item number 13 is to adjourn, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Got a first.
Second.
And a second, any discussion before we move to vote, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, 8:26.
We adjusted it down.